All right. Thank you. Next, we would, I'd like to just open the conversation and share some background and information for all commissioners. As you received updates on Friday, we received a report from the Department of Corrections instructing the sheriff to reduce the numbers in his jail and cited three different incidents. So we just wanted to go through a timeline and have a discussion of what has occurred over the last week and several days, as well as the tremendous amount of work that our staff has put in throughout the weekend to lay out a plan and a proposal so that we can address these issues moving forward. I want to, I'm going to turn it over to the county manager, but before I do, I just want to thank the county manager and the senior leadership team, especially our public health staff and Department of Corrections staff, Kathy Hadeen, Sarah Holly, Monica Long, who worked throughout the weekend, and Scott Williams, who worked throughout the weekend to lay out a proposal and a plan to work with the sheriff's office and under Sheriff Finney to address these issues. I will share with the whole board, I did have a conversation with the sheriff over the weekend. I'm hopeful that we can move forward together and address these issues. We did share about the concerns, the problems, the situation, and how we're going to address that. So it was a positive conversation at the end. I just wanted to put that on the record that we did have a conversation. The one thing I would say is that as we talk about the short term and the county manager will lay out kind of the whole scenario and the situation, is that, you know, the news media, the folks, we move quickly to the logistics piece and solving the situation, and we know that this is much more than just a logistics piece. We need to, once we get the logistics and the short term solved this week, which is ordered, we need to continue to address the command climate issues and the internal cultural issues at the jail, and I pushed the sheriff really hard on that. He agreed that he would come to the table with us and address those issues. And so I'll hold him to that commitment, as we all will, because we know that these problems will just continue to reoccur and resurface if we don't actually get to the root cause. This board has done that in every department when these issues surface, and we will continue to do that in corrections as well. I want to just turn it over to the county manager, who's going to lay out kind of timelines and scenarios so that everybody is informed and on board with exactly what has occurred and the direction that we're headed. So with that, County Manager O'Connor.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members. I'm going to, I'm going to start a bit where the chair ended a second ago in referencing that at times it's easy to want to pull things into a one-specific instance conversation, and I have seen the sheriff doing that over the weekend at times in some of his commentary, while leaving out the broader pool in which we often swim, or the arc of many different pieces over time, in which this all must be considered. And so this morning, I'm going to walk you through some information I just provided in front of you. There's a few extra copies over here available as well, if anyone wants to see it, that sets a context beyond the past weekend, beyond the past two weeks, but also then focuses in on what we have seen recently. I've read comments about lack of partnership, lack of attention from the board, lack of care from the county, and I'm not here to form a final conclusion on that myself, other than to say, I think the timeline of events and the demonstrated documentation would paint a different picture than the one sometimes depicted by the sheriff. I want to start back in 2019. We talk about cultural issues, and so there's a, there's a program service delivery notes piece here. I'm going to walk through it. There's some attachments I'll reference in the other sheet. In 2019, this board sat here as video emerged of a sheriff's office correctional officer beating Mr. Terrell Wilson while he was fully restrained at the adult detention center. At the same site we're talking about now, in the same organization, under the same office, this was an incident that occurred in 2019. And in May, this county board approved a $500,000 settlement with Mr. Wilson as a part of a lawsuit that came about. Then in 2020, sheriff's office staff in the Ramsey County Sheriff's Office at the adult detention center segregated eight Ramsey County correctional officers of color from the floor that housed Derek Chauvin while he was in our custody. The order had been given by Superintendent Steve Lyden, who still remains employed by the sheriff's office today, and he has continued to have periodic involvement with decision-making at the adult detention center. In the first case I referenced to you, I would point out that the sheriff ended his comments to the Pioneer Press by stating, quote, "The conduct captured on video will not be tolerated under my watch. Misconduct will be investigated expeditiously, and if personnel are found at fault, discipline will be swift and thorough." Mr. Lyden continues to have involvement with the jail up until this day and continues to be employed by the Ramsey County Sheriff's Office. Pages one through eight of the attached packet summarize those two instances as a point of historical marker, if you would like reference to them. In August of 2022, the county board then was asked to approve a $1.5 million settlement with those eight correctional officers stemming from the pages that I just referenced. I'm going to now be more into the current events that we're talking about, starting last September, last fall in 2022. But it is important not to detach those events, or the broader events happening around us, from our conversations now about care, and who gets care, and how care is delivered in the adult detention center. This is not a one-off instance. In September and October, Administrative Director Kyle Mestad began to issue jail population memos. They came to myself and two of the deputy county managers, but after three memos, the memos stopped being issued without explanation, and regular reports from county departments, city leaders, and judicial partners, when I would ask them, what are we learning? What are we seeing on the ground about jail population numbers? All our parties noted that while they all worked together well, the sheriff's office was a non-participant in these collaborative, ongoing efforts to reduce the population at the adult detention center. So others were continuing the work without the sheriff's office even present for the work that they said was the top priority for them and their community. There is, sorry, I thought there was a memo here, but I might have missed it. There is a memo, if you would like to see a jail population memo, I can provide one. It outlines concerns about population and questions associated with it. Beginning from September through February into this year, there were collaborative efforts that I just referenced that involved the county, they involved the Second Judicial District, they involved the city of St. Paul, they've involved our suburban police departments. I want to thank all of these entities for their work coming to the table to address significant issues that we all agree must be addressed to avoid an overcrowding issue at the jail. The sheriff then came and committed to ongoing jail population memos, oh, excuse me, let me go back. Those collaborative conversations occurred. Between the time of last fall and last Friday, the numbers in the jail decreased from approximately 450 individuals on an average daily count to 370 individuals on an average daily count. That is a population reduction of 21.5% during that time period without active involvement from the office that oversees the jail. Any claim that we have not been doing work through expedited court hearings, through working with the county attorney's office to be a part of those processes, through our corrections department to not make change, I would say the population is down 21% during that time. In December, the adult detention center had a population workshop here with the county board. Sheriff Fletcher joined us for that conversation. At that workshop, he committed to giving specific population goals in terms of specific groups of individuals who are most likely needing to be moved out to address population challenges moving forward. We talked about mental health issues getting backlogged in the jail. We talked about low-level offenses being backlogged in the jail. These are legitimate conversations that should and did happen here around this table. There was never a follow-up based on that information of asking for, where do you believe we should start? There's been no written follow-up, there's been no formal follow-up within our staff. Additionally, the sheriff committed to this board to ongoing jail population memos during that workshop. It's all a part of a recorded workshop. As far as I am aware, no commissioners, and I can speak for myself, have ever seen a jail population memo since that workshop in December. We are being told that we need to be worried about numbers and certain populations of individuals, but then not provided the information by the individual who is telling us to be concerned about the numbers and the context of those populations. And additionally, while the Ramsey County Correctional Facility continued to be raised as a proposed solution by Sheriff Fletcher, he has not on any occasion himself directly engaged in a discussion or even a request that involved the deputy county manager overseeing that area, Kathy Hadeen, or the corrections director, Monica Long, which would be a typical step of any other county department or office in a situation in which they are trying to solve a significant issue. There's been no communication from that end. Specific to this instance, so even as the population came down, concerns still came forward. In December, on December 21st, Public Health Director Sarah Holly sent a letter to Sheriff Fletcher outlining concerns about medical direction and care at the adult detention center. And I want to make sure page 19, handwritten page 19, is the email that led the packet of information that was provided. You can see it was sent from Director Holly directly to the sheriff with a number of other individuals in the county's chain of command and in the sheriff's office to ensure that this was getting the attention of the office, concerns about medical care and treatment at the jail. Attached with that were some attachments that you would find in here, which would be a memo asking for clarity around directives given in October, a reminder about the memorandum of understanding that operated correctional health facilities within the jail. All of these documents were provided as a part of it and are included in this packet. When you go to page 21, after no response of any kind from the sheriff's office regarding Director Holly's letter, she resent that information with a memo on January 24th. You can see dated January 24th, the same individuals received Director Holly's message. You can see also, we asked for a response by January 27th. We received no response of any kind to any of the information that was legitimately raised in the memo and attachments. Sheriff Fletcher finally responded, oh, excuse me. So, January 27th comes and passes. Because of no responses, Ramsey County contacted the Department of Corrections to outline concerns about medical care and treatment happening in a facility in Ramsey County. There was an immediate response from the leaders at the Department of Corrections, and they showed up onsite and began an investigation on January 30th, the following Monday. Sheriff Fletcher then responded in writing to the December 21st memo from Public Health Director Holly, a few hours after the Department of Corrections began its onsite investigation at the adult detention center on January 30th. His memo to Director Holly is on page 23, handwritten in the packet in front of you, and leads with an accusation of slandering the department, follows up by talking about unveiling plans to find a new medical care unit to provide correctional health care in the adult detention center, and then seeks to refute the allegations raised as concerns by Director Holly earlier concerning medical care and direction at the adult detention center. On February 3rd, a few days later, the Department of Corrections outlined serious concerns that corroborated the earlier concerns raised by Director Holly to Sheriff Fletcher. I do not see that as having been slander, and I see that as correctional health staff doing their job in a very difficult environment, and I see that the Department of Corrections found third-party sources to corroborate those concerns beyond the initial letters that had been sent. All weekend, February 4th and 5th, Ramsey County staff from public health, corrections, the county attorney's office, worked on preparing potential options and clear contractual terms that would support the sheriff's office to comply with this Department of Corrections order that impacts the department. The first requested meeting by the sheriff's office to formally ask for support from the county occurred yesterday at 10:30 a.m. The report was due yesterday afternoon, with the first conversations formally occurring with corrections later that day. An agreement to house incarcerated individuals at the Ramsey County Correctional Facility has not yet been signed by all parties as of this morning. We're close, we're hopeful that it gets signed today. It's in front of the sheriff's office to sign. But in the idea that the county has not been acting, paying attention, operating in a way of trying to make communication, trying to create collaborative tables for involvement, I submit this information to you to show that we will and have and will continue to do our level best to serve residents and incarcerated individuals in this community. On top of all of that, there's another dynamic that I'm not prepared to fully address today, but I will partially address today, and we will be asked to have to address again in two weeks at an upcoming board meeting. On Friday night, after the Department of Corrections had issued their order, around 11:00 p.m., I received a memo from Administrative Director Mestad outlining the shape of the budget at year-end close for 2022 for the Ramsey County Sheriff's Office. And in that memo, Director Mestad lays out that the sheriff's office plans to come in $2.4 to $2.6 million over budget for last year. That money was never authorized by the county board to be spent. That was never raised as a specific number that we heard in any financial reporting reviews or in a workshop in which we talked about the adult detention center here. And it raises questions, including that the sheriff, both on Friday and again over the weekend, in response to quotes given by the board chair, said that for $2 million more dollars, this would not have been an issue. Regardless of how you got the $2.4 million, I would like to highlight that the sheriff's office did spend $2 million beyond their allocated budget, and we are still talking about the Department of Corrections and the adult detention center. Meaning there's both an issue on the budget and the authority of the board relative to the sheriff's office about who decides spending, which is actually quite clear, and an issue of $2 million would not have solved your operational and cultural issues, because that money was spent anyway, and I'm still here laying this out to you today. And on the budget side, because history matters, in 2017, the Ramsey County Board approved $1.3 million for an additional 23 full-time equivalents to fully fund the sheriff's office staffing study request. I realize Sheriff Fletcher was not the sheriff at that time, but it was something we did organizationally, not because of individuals. And so as I stepped into this role five years ago, that had recently been funded, and it still is on our website, and it talks about the ways in which the county board worked with the sheriff's office to fully fund requests around the adult detention center and transport and other areas. Surely, things can change over time, but that staffing study was done only five years ago. I'm not prepared to fully walk through all elements of the sheriff's office memo from Friday. We've been busy dealing with the Department of Corrections order, but in two weeks, we will have to close the books for Ramsey County for 2022, and we have to pay obligations that have been incurred. And you can anticipate that I will be back with a set of recommendations that both will address the issue of needing to cover that financing alongside additional suggested controls on the programmatic and budgetary side to work with this department, this office, to ensure they are able to comply with their budget. Because as history matters, in 2017, the staffing study happened. In 2019, I came before this board and asked them for $1 million to cover the sheriff's office overspend that year. In 2020, the sheriff's office received an additional $860,000 in revenue as a part of claims related to emergency response, and that was the same year that the sheriff sued the county board, saying, "You didn't fully fund my budget, and you didn't take my full ask." In 2021, the sheriff again complained about his budget, and the court issued a ruling saying, "The county board, after hearing from the sheriff's office and fully evaluating that office alongside the rest of the county operating departments, had full authority to make the budgetary decisions that they made." They did not arbitrarily make a decision, they heard the concerns of the office, they considered them alongside other county priorities, and they made the decisions that they made. It is clear where prioritization and budget decisions get set, and the court affirmed that in 2021. And now in 2022, we have a projected overspend of $2.5 million, which also, that office received an additional $1 million this year to cover the increased costs from bargaining on the employee side to ensure that we would be competitive and able to attract and retain outstanding employees. So, I share all that today, Madam Chair, as a way to set the context for where we're at. I appreciate you and the board allowing me to walk through it. I'd be happy to take any questions, and I'll end where you started with an appreciation towards staff who have been a part of working through these challenging dynamics for five years.
Thank you, County Manager O'Connor. I want to open it up to board members. I'll start with Commissioner Reinhardt, and then Commissioner Fretham.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you to the staff for putting together all of that information, because it paints a pretty clear and dark picture. And I appreciate the fact that we stepped up to the plate and we contacted the Department of Corrections out of concern, not about the budget, but about people that are in our jail and need medical care, need to get to appointments, and having an issue as outlined by Director Holly. You know, people make bad decisions, and they end up in our correctional system. There are all kinds of reasons that that happens to, and we can, I mean, that's a whole different discussion. But the fact is, they're there, and they are human beings, and when we talk about all are valued and thrive in Ramsey County, it doesn't matter where they are, their circumstances. We treat them with respect, and we take care of what we need to, what we are responsible for when they are in our care. So I'm so glad that we did, I mean, we followed every step we possibly could. And unlike what the sheriff would like us to, like the public to believe, that this is a budgetary issue, it isn't. Clearly, he spent more money than he had, and he continues to do that. And I don't know where that, how we can deal with that ultimately, but it's not as if the sheriff didn't know that there were budgetary issues all of last year. It was put in front of them many, many times, along with solutions. Our chief financial officer worked with them hours and hours and hours to make sure that if there was a problem from what we were doing as far as the accounting, we fixed it. We said, okay, we get that. We can, we can move that around so that it's more in line with the way you're trying to do your budget. Wasn't that anybody did anything wrong, it was just like, okay, I get your point. We can, we can adjust to that. But it was as if the solutions that we provided, wasn't as if, they were ignored, because they knew ultimately that they could come back to us and say, hey, we overspent by $2.6 or $2.4 million, and what are we going to do? And at the same time, though, I mean, the budget issues are concern, and we need to deal with them, but we need a partner in doing that, not somebody that's trying to stick it to the taxpayers. Because that's what this is. Two point, what is it, 2.6 or 2.4?
Madam Chair, we don't totally know yet.
Okay. A lot of money. And 21% decrease in the population there, and we still, still have these issues, along with the $1 million that they got that we added because they said there were concerns. And we said, okay, again, working in partnership. It's not just ignoring the county board, it's ignoring the constituents of this county. Because those are taxpayer dollars that were spent, and the outcomes, you know, if the outcomes had been better, if people had been taken care of, it would still be wrong, but at least we would have better outcomes for people, and that's what this is about. It is about safety, absolutely. And are we willing to work with the sheriff on making sure that we provide the funds needed to keep people safe? Yes, we are. We need those jail population numbers, we need to have contact, we need the updated answers, we need responses. I know that, for example, the Attorney General of the state of Minnesota has repeatedly asked for a response to his concerns that were raised, and as far as I know, he has never received a response. The Attorney General for the state of Minnesota can't get an answer to serious allegations. When the issues were raised that were provided to us as examples, and Director Holly, I'm sure it was very hard for her to hear those and to simply, and to try to say, okay, we need to get to the bottom of it, I'm not going to make a judgment without talking to the sheriff, and repeatedly asked, can you please talk to us? Tell us what happened, because all we're getting is one thing, although it was more than one incident. And again, it's not just one incident. This is something that is systemic, and we need to deal with it. And I am so pleased that the sheriff has agreed to sit down, and and I'm trying not to be I'm trying to be hopeful, let's try it that way. Trying to be hopeful, because as you can see in all of these, all this documentation, we've had promise after promise after promise, and they haven't been fulfilled. I think it's important to note that, again, as budget chair, I know, they know, that this isn't about the budget. They spent the over $2 million, and it didn't help. In fact, things were worse, to the point that we felt that we had to report ourselves. I mean, that's not something we do out of spite, that isn't something we do out of anything other than the concern about the welfare of the people in our, in our adult detention center. That was it. There is no gain for us, other than that safety of those individuals, none. In fact, there is a huge downside because of the cost that there will be there. So I don't even want to think about the fact that this is, and I know it's being painted this way, that it is somehow political, and it's just about the money. We wouldn't do this. We didn't do this in a vacuum. We tried to get answers. We tried to make sure that the directives from Corrections, healthcare, excuse me, Health Services and Corrections, that those things were heard and understood, and they were ignored. So this isn't about politics, this is strictly about safety and the treatment of people within our system, and getting a culture change, because this has got to stop. Not only are we not safer, not only are the inmates, or the people that are held there, they're not inmates at the Adult Correction Center because they have not been convicted yet, are safe, and that the people on the streets are safe. I don't know how to say this any stronger, because, again, I am hopeful that this is a wake-up call to not only us, which it was when we had to do the Department of Corrections reporting, but to the sheriff. We want to be part of the solution, and it's not all about money, as you can tell by the budget overspend and by the reduction in the population. Our judges, everyone involved, the county attorney's office, want to be involved in resolving this, and we need the sheriff there as a partner. In the meantime, we took the actions that we needed to, to keep people safe, and it's just that simple. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Reinhardt. Commissioner Fretham.
I'm looking back at my notes over time, and we had a, probably the most contentious vote in my time here was October 26, 2021, in funding for civil unrest fees and costs. It might have only passed by one vote, if I remember correctly, and I voted for it. And I have my notes, and I said, I am okay with this vote, and I told the sheriff that I hope he saw it as fulfilling our commitment to cover these costs, which is a commitment we made as a board. But I also said it was a, it was a part of trust building, and that my expectations in that voting was that we would get continued engagement and collaboration from his office. In particular, I have asked, going on two years now, for workshops, how do we train our staff, and can we know about that so we don't have $500,000 settlements for staff that beat restrained inmates? How do we know that our deputies are being supported in the way that they need to, knowing the intense pressure and scrutiny they face, the danger in their jobs? the intense pressure and scrutiny they face, the, the danger in their jobs? They, they are going into situations that are unsafe. I don't even like making phone calls to people I don't know. So I, I have every respect for our deputies and the work they are doing, and I want to make sure they're taken care of, which is also why we agreed to raise their salaries this year, outside of the bargaining process, to make sure that we, we were compensating them for what they are doing. We have made commitment over commitment to show that we are willing to fund the things that are necessary, but we have to do our job in determining our budget. And I, and, you know, the sheriff is not here today, which would have been nice. Maybe next year, he can also come to our truth and taxation hearing and listen to resident after resident tell us how increasing our levy results in them being not sure that they will continue to have a home. Because in finding $2.5 million to cover his budget, our options are taking it from other departments who are just as strapped and could just as easily spend two, three times that amount in service to our communities, or taking it from our residents. And, and I don't want to do that anymore. We, we funded a, a system earlier this year to, or la, middle of last year, to ensure that resident, our, our inmates at the ADC were being, having their health and safety checks performed, and yet I get a report from the DOC last week saying, oh, they're not actually being done. We were told that means it will be done. I don't, I don't like being lied to. And in a department where your job is literally accountability, our, our public safety, to me, public safety isn't catching someone for stealing a car, it's making sure kids aren't stealing cars, and that they have the support that they need, where that's not even an option or something that occurs to them. But I see this office, the sheriff's office, and our attorney's office as, as public accountability. When you make a mistake, when you harm our community, you need to be accountable for it. And Sheriff Fletcher, you have made a mistake, and you have harmed our community, and you didn't even show up here today to be accountable for it. That is all I'm asking. And, and that's what's most frustrating about this, that we are here, we want to help, and I have stepped up to the plate every single time he's come in with an ask, saying, we need this to make our community safe, and I have said yes, even when others on our board haven't. And, and I am, I am trying to continue to be reliable, even in this absence of trust, but it is hard. It is really hard. And I, and I hate knowing that someone was in a facility that bears the Ramsey County name, having a stroke for an hour before she was able to be taken to a hospital. And I want to personally thank our public health staff and nurses who have been in this situation, when not only are, are you doing work in a, in a situation that many nurses wouldn't step into, but you're doing it in a, in a way that's potentially dangerous to your licenses. And, and thank you for sticking with it, thank you for standing up and saying it's not right, and thank you, thank you for taking care of people who a lot of people wouldn't want to take care of. And if, if the sheriff thinks he can just go to the open market and find a contractor to come in to provide those services, there are not a lot of nurses that want to do that work and want to put their licenses on the line unless there is a, a showing that they are going to have the support they need to do what they are obligated to do in the service of inmates. And I don't think we, as a board, should be paying for costs of additional services going with an outside contractor, because I think the fees are going to be enormous to find someone willing to take on that risk if these issues aren't addressed. I don't care if it's public health, but if you're asking us to pay more to cover your risk of not doing the job, I don't want to do that. We're already paying more. We already paid $1.5 million last year due to issues in running this facility, and issues that you haven't addressed. And, and so I am frustrated, we, we have our job, and, and this is making it hard for us to do our job. And it, and it's hard for us to look people in the face in all the other work that we're doing, when we have a, a facility that is not taking care of people. It's hard for us to say that we're, we're doing what we need to do to show that people are all valued and thrive. So that, that's my frustration in all of this.
Thank you, Commissioner Fretham. Commissioner McGuire.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm gonna just thank my colleagues for their eloquent responses, and I'm gonna just add and, and concur with so much of what has been said, but I feel like I need to say it as well, that I want to thank our staff first, first and foremost, for all the work that they're doing to really try to serve our residents, and, and try to work with the sheriff's department, so that we can be the county that we, we want to be and that we are. And just to express my frustration to the sheriff and the sheriff's office, who does, they come, when we do get them to come in, which is very rarely, they say, we'll work, you know, we'll do this, we'll do this, and then they don't. And it is a lack of trust that we have now, but I am very frustrated with the department that won't come to the table with us and work on the things that we all care about. And it's really frustrating when you are in charge of a budget, as the county board is, and you have entities under you that, that continue to overspend their budget. We, unfortunately, the sheriff's an elected office, so that we have limited resources, or limited ways to hold him accountable, and I'm looking forward to the county manager coming to us with anything we can do to hold him accountable. We have a county attorney who's elected, he is held accountable, and he keeps to his budget, and he has a lot of, of things that are going on in his area, and we work with him, and, and he, we, we go back and forth on what, what we can bear with our budget. But it's really frustrating, I, I don't often say this, that I, I, I think county government is one of the most effective and best forms of government, but cities get to a point their, their law enforcement officers because they're held accountable for their budget. We're held accountable for a budget we can't even, that we, we can't enforce. And I'm very frustrated with a sheriff that won't come to the table and, and talk to us. So I'm disappointed, Sheriff Fletcher, that you, you say you want to do these things, but we just don't see it. And so I am going to be hopeful as well, Commissioner Reinhardt, that going forward, because we must move forward with what we've, with what system we have right now, and I'm, as I said, looking forward to any way at all that we can hold, hold this budget accountable, but more importantly, how we can make the jail a place where people are going to be safe, and, and where we are doing the work that we should be doing in a, in a corrections environment. So I'm just gonna plead, plead that this happen, and I'm, I'm disappointed that we had to go to the Department of, of the state, the State Department of Corrections to, to intervene here, because we couldn't get the sheriff to work with us. And so just hopeful that this will be the impetus that we need to, to work together. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner McGuire. Commissioner Ortega.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I concur with everybody else, and you know, we've identified the problems over and over and over again. The real question is, moving forward, what is it that we're gonna do besides meeting with the sheriff, coming to an agreement, and being back here next year? Because this is a repeat over, this is not the third time, it's not the fifth time, I mean, it, it keeps on going. My question is, what are the, what are the realities, and we're gonna have to push this to the max? And it, and it's, and if it gets ugly, it gets ugly. But what are the things that we could do moving forward? I mean, that he has a $2.5 million debt, that's not new. Are we gonna pay it? We're responsible, we're the adults in the room, right? But what is it that we could do? Could we, for example, I mean, to have Alex sit down with the sheriff, to come up with a plan to remediate any budget shortfalls or issues, and then find that that doesn't work either? Can we do, on top of my head, could we audit him every two months? I mean, a serious audit? I don't know what we could do, that's what I'm asking you, Ryan. I think you've got to put forward on the table, you know, what is, any, you know, I know there's, there's a lot of things we don't want to do. We want to keep the county running smoothly, we don't want to get into any confrontation that, that hurts, hurts us in terms of moving forward with our vision, but enough is enough. And where do you draw the line, and where do you say, and it's gonna be painful.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Ortega, just a short answer today, and then this will be the conversation in two weeks, and I appreciate the framing. There are personnel and non-personnel issues related to spending and oversight across the department, so people and the non-people side. I will come back with proposals to address both in ways that I believe are within the county's authority, and do not usurp the areas where the sheriff has clear authority under state statute or constitution. Human resources has to be a collaboration, and we need to make sure that that's happening, because hiring and promotions and all of that work happens through human resources under the county manager hired by the county board. I'm gonna look at some pieces there and give some options in that request for board action. On the non-personnel side, the county board, over years, in an attempt to run an efficient and effective organization, has delegated decision-making authorities on certain things to departments, including the sheriff's office. I think it's time to revisit all of those delegated authorities, and you'll be seeing a list of those in two weeks, because while it will create friction to have to bring more things through for approvals, it adds a level of oversight that aligns with your comments.
Yes. Did you have a follow-up?
Well, I have, I have another comment.
Okay. Commissioner Moran.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I'm just trying to wrap my mind around this conversation and all that is happening right now. But the one thing that I have learned with my short time being here is that the county's doing some awesome work. We're doing awesome work for children, families, communities, individuals. We're working to create a strong workforce, employment, struggling with homelessness and housing, and, you know, giving a person opportunity to have a home. You know, we, we are really here at the county focusing on dignity and respect, and how we do that for each and every person. You know, we, we must have a clean environment, you know? All these things cost money, right? They all cost money, and they're all good work. And, you know, I'm, you know, I work around the continuum of care, right? Those things cost money, and we often fall short of being able to do those things for real people, to improve real people's lives. And for the life of me, I can't understand how a person can just spend money that they don't have. Because we have a lot of issues here that we're trying to address. You know, not just spend money, but we're talking about $2.6 million that can easily be used for any of these other projects that we need to do, must do, and have to do. You know, it's a little, it sounds a little abusive to me, that a person can just have no consideration for what the work that we have to do here at the county. And if the sheriff says, well, I spend money to make our community safe, you know, working out of the fear factor, the people are incarcerated already. So I'm gonna just echo a little bit from what I heard from Representative Ortega over there about an audit. I think we must do an audit. You know, is the money spent on training our staff, you know, was it spent on the healthcare and medical equipment that they're asking for? You know, how many new individuals was hired as sheriffs or deputies? You know, who was working overtime, how often, why? I'm just full of more questions than I am anything else about how these dollars are being spent. But there has to be some oversight. We can't just have people just, can I use the word, going rogue, right? And just saying, I'm gonna do this? Because there's a lot of things that needs to be done in this county for a lot of people and individuals, and for our communities across Ramsey County. And we have an obligation. I would love to more know what that means for us as a county, you know, if we have to visit, you know, a county manager. You know, you just mentioned, you know, the state statutes and our constitution. I mean, we need to look at those too, because we have to hold people accountable, and they cannot just do what they want, how they want, and when they want. We just can't. You know, it'd be a beautiful thing if we can all do that, right? And just spend, and spend, and spend. And so I just look forward to just hearing back, you know, about how we can be a stronger board, holding people accountable for the misuse of dollars and funds, and how we can work to ensure that we are serving everyone, and not just one entity that feels as if they can spend. I look forward to it.
Thank you, Commissioner Moran. I'm gonna go to Commissioner Zhang, and then follow back with Commissioner McGuire. Go ahead, Commissioner Zhang.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, what a great time to be at the county, right? Like, and, and I just say that it's like very troubling, very troubling, to say the There are many people within the sheriff's department whom I very respect, like the leadership within his team that I respect. And I think it's a, it's time that we all come to the table. And I'm glad that he reached out to you, and that you had a conversation with, with him, Chair, Chair Matt Castillo, and that it's hopeful, but, like, I would say it's like cautious optimism, just given kind of the pattern that I'm seeing here, like recurring, because this is not a budgetary issue with the issues that are going on. So I'm glad that the DOC is doing an investigation, and we'll, we'll see more reports from that. And I also cannot swallow and fathom that I will have to approve additional expense of about $2.6 million in about two weeks. I would want to see where the overspending is occurring, and what happened, like get a full accounting of that, as well as seeing what are we going to do to, like, set controls in place, and in addition to the audit. And if the sheriff or anyone from their office is not present for that, for that presentation, I'm not going to approve that budget. I just don't know how we spend $2.6 million overspending. What was our levy, and how much was that county manager, our recent levy?
Madam Chair, our, I, I think, two ways to think about it. 1% on the county levy is approximately $3.5 million, to give you a sense of the overspend amount. We spent, we levy approximately $400 million annually as a county.
Right. And anytime we go to the people, Commissioner Fretham mentioned it, you know, people are talking about being priced out, and property taxes are one of those ways. And I just, yeah, that $2.6 million, of course, that can provide safety for our community members by providing stability for them in their homes, by providing services that they need and expediting that for them. And tho, those are just the things that come to my mind, that when we continuously to overspend in one area, it hurts other parts of the services that we are delivering as a county and as a whole. So I would just leave those, that, those are, that's where I'm at right now. And I just look forward to continue that conversation and call on the leadership from the sheriff's office to be a part of the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Zhang. Commissioner McGuire.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and well said, Commissioner Zhang, Commissioner Moran, all, all of my colleagues are so wise on this issue, and I agree with everything that's been said. It occurs to me, and I was guilty of it myself, that I was lumping corrections in with everything, and we have a very strong corrections department, and a very strong director of corrections, Monica Long. And she has been managing her department in a, in the way that we, we want our county to be operating. She stays in budget with her corrections work, and, and it's, it's, we sometimes use, and I was guilty of it, use it in reference to the sheriff, who's doing the adult detention centers. So when we come back, I think we just need to be clear with the public, like, who, what is, what is, what are we dealing with here? It's not the Ramsey County Corrections Department, which is directed by Monica Long, who stays in budget, it's, it's the Sheriff Bob Fletcher and his management of his department, which is the adult detention center and the sheriff's department. So we could just get a better sense of, of what we're talking about here. There's, there's two different things, and I just want to commend our corrections department, who's been trying to work, I mean, as we all have, trying to work with the sheriff's department, and have just not, have met with non-involvement in that, in that regard. department and have just not, have met with non-involvement in that regard. So thank you, Madam Chair. I just felt like we needed to make a distinction.
Thank you, Commissioner Reinhardt.
Everything has been so on target here. I just, I really want to go back to something that Commissioner Moran said, because we know what's going on in the media. It's the fear factor. And I just hope that people, instead of listening to that rhetoric, and that's what it is, because we are wanting people to be safe. That's why we reported to the Department of Corrections. If you want to talk about safety, then please look at the documents, look at what has been happening, because this is not about, "Give us more money and we'll be safer." And so I really appreciate the fact that she brought that up because that's, it's an easy thing to do, to scare people. And what we're trying to do is help people. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Reinhardt. I appreciate all of your comments and concerns. We've raised a lot of questions. I hear the frustration, I share your frustration. I also want to lift up again our staff that worked not just this weekend, but throughout the last several years under these conditions, especially our public health staff that's in the correctional facility in the adult detention center. Thanks for the clarification. Really, who not only have worked under hard conditions, conditions where they weren't respected, where their own safety is at risk, but that they were brave enough to bring these issues forward. For Sarah Holly, our director of public health, who addressed this directly with the sheriff to no avail. It takes a tremendous amount of courage to lean out and to say, "We need something bigger." To Scott Williams, who has been working with the Department of Corrections, to make sure that this wasn't about politics, this is about keeping our community safe, this is about keeping the folks who are entrusted to our care for whatever length of time that we're doing the right thing. So I just really want to say thank you to our staff and the tremendous amount of work, to the county attorney, to Judge Castro and the bench, who has been working and collaborating throughout this process. I am also hopeful that we continue to do this work. I will say, I did not invite the sheriff here today officially. Of course, it's open to the public, he can come, but I know we've asked where he was today. I did not invite him. I will formally invite him in two weeks when we have a longer conversation about the budget. That's a new situation. Today was about the situation that came up with the Department of Corrections. We wanted to make sure that that information was shared with all of you in public and that we're being transparent about the issues before us and the work ahead of us. I will formally make that invitation to the sheriff about, in two weeks, for his budget to join us, to be fair. I agree with all of you. We've seen a history, we've seen a pattern, we need different. This is truly a leadership issue. This is a command climate issue. Whether it's budget or staffing, treating people with dignity and respect doesn't cost any money, but it is about attitude and it is about an environment in which the lack of that is tolerated, and that can't happen. I also want to say that many of our correctional officers themselves came forward with these concerns, as well as our public health staff, which, again, takes tremendous amount of courage to say, "What's happening in our own department isn't right." And so I want to commend all of those employees who have been brave and bold, that are really lifting up our values of racial and health equity, making sure that all are valued and thrive regardless of the situation that they're interacting with us. So, you know, our deputies, our correctional officers, our public health staff should not be lumped into the problem here, and that we lift them up in their work and their continued service to our community, and that this truly is a leadership issue, which is why we, at this table, are having this conversation and why we're working with the leadership team at the sheriff's department. With that, I just want to say, any final comments? Commissioner Zhang.
And I just wanted to reiterate, like, how I started, that it is truly a great time to be at the county because of my onboarding, right, that I've had. I just have met so many great, talented staff who are so committed to delivering, like, excellent service to our residents. So I just wanted to emphasize that, but it's so stark in comparison to what we are dealing with here. So I just wanted to lift that up and just to, like, clarify that, like, that's what I really mean, is that, like, we're doing such great work, like, I just, you know, the staff are trying to be creative and also elevating issues that they see that they're trying to troubleshoot, right? Like, that's just been my experience in my short time here, and I just wanted to say that, that's why it's been great. I've been a part of, like, two, you know, ribbon cuttings already in my short time, right, for votes that I didn't take. So that's why I was just saying that, like, it's just amazing with the leadership, as well as with the hard work that staff have been able to carry and deliver, that what we are discussing here is so stark, that it is not us. And I also believe that where we will come together as people, like, from both offices, from, like, the sheriff's office as well as our county board, and our county is just that, we have to come together around values about how we want to treat people with dignity and respect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner Zhang. All right, with that, we're going to move on to the rest of our board items and switch to our administrative items. I'm going to turn to Commissioner Fretham for those items.
Thank you. I'd like to start by moving item number three, Public Works Construction Quarterly Report for October 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2022.